Good morning. If everyone can have their seats, we're going to go ahead and begin. Good morning. The Planning and Zoning Commission meeting of Tuesday, January the 10th, 2023 is now called to order at 10:02. And we're going to administer the statements of Officer and O.S.A. office to the newly appointed and reappointed members. We're going to be swearing in Charles Shearer and Mr. Mike Sapata as alternate. Item 1B is hold a discussion and take action on the selection of a chair and vice chair, each to serve a one-year term. We're now open for nominations.
I would like to nominate Charlie Shearer as our chairman. I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Shearer, you can go ahead and take your seat at the chair. And nominations are now open for vice chair. We have a nomination for Mary Carum as vice chair. Are there any other nominations? All in favor of Mary Carum as vice chair?
Aye.
Congratulations, Mary. Okay, Mr. Shearer, I'll hand the the meeting over to you now.
Awesome. Thank you very much. And it's good to be back. Some of us are gluttons for punishment. What can I say? Anyway, hopefully I'll make it through this meeting, but I'm going to let all of you know that there is the possibility that my daughter is about to go into labor with my second grandchild. If that happens, you will see me hit the door and Ms. Carum will take over. So we'll see how that goes. All right. So we've done that. So we're down to so I see we're doing public comments. Is that that's we're allowing citizens to speak at this point? Okay. Now, if you do they they can't wait to speak on the particular case if they choose to do something, correct? So we're going to give you the opportunity to to speak. If you fill out a request to speak card, please, if you haven't, get one of those filled out and hand it to for the ladies over here. If you'd like to speak now or if you would like to wait until your case is is presented, then you can you can also speak at that time on the public hearings. Anyone that'd like to speak at this time? All right. And I'm going to move on to item three, the consent agenda.
I'll I'll read it. Item 3A is receive a report, hold a discussion, and take action on approving the minutes from the Planning and Zoning Commission meetings held on November 8th and December 6th, 2022. And item B is receive a report, hold a discussion, and take action on a final plat for lots 1-9, block 2 of the Bluebonnet Ridge subdivision. And that can be taken as one item.
Okay. We need to split these up if we can. Item B, I will need to abstain and leave council chambers. I'll need to turn that over to Ms. Carum. I have a conflict of interest on item B. So we can act on item A and then we can go to item B. That's okay?
I move to approve the consent of item A.
Have a motion?
Second.
Have a second? All in favor of aye?
Aye.
Okay. Let the record reflect that I will be standing down as chair. Ms. Carum will take over for item B.
Do I need to move? Just one quick thing. So I entertain a motion for item B on the consent agenda.
I move that we approve consent agenda item B.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It passes.
Okay. Thank you. Item 4 will go into public hearings. Item 4A.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. If I could just remind all the commission members to turn on your mics when you speak. That way we can hear you when we do the minutes. Happy New Year to everybody and thank you for being here. Item 4A, receive a report, hold a discussion, conduct a public hearing, and make a recommendation on a request for approval of a conditional use permit for an indoor amusement without alcohol sales for downtown escape rooms located at 318 West Chestnut Street, case number 2021-138CUP. This item came before the commission and was approved by council late 2021. This is the aerial view of 318 West Chestnut where downtown escape rooms will be. And this is the zoning at Central Area. If you recall, they came through, got approval by council. When they came forward to staff to request a certificate of occupancy, we discovered that there was a condition within their CUP that they had to obtain that CO within 180 days. And those that that amount of days had passed. And so we are asking that the commission reconsider the CUP as it was previously approved. All of the conditions are in your packet and they were all the same. There were no changes. We're just trying to basically remove that requirement of 100 in days of obtaining that certificate of occupancy and reinstating the CUP as it is.
Okay. Any questions of staff? Okay. Seeing none, it's your run. You're speaking on behalf of this request. Either for or against. Okay, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Chair will entertain a motion.
I move the protocol of request to extend the beyond 180 days certificate of occupancy for conditional use permit.
I'll second.
Motion second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item 4B.
Excuse me just a moment. It is a new, we are issuing a new CUP, so it's not to extend the 180 days because it has expired.
Do I need to restate the motion or can can we just
I would go ahead and correct the the motion and
All right. I recommend approval of the basically issuing a new conditional use permit. And then later we're going to get the certificate of occupancy or what's going to happen?
You just need to approve the CUP.
Okay, so we're good with that?
Mm-hmm.
I move to approve the new CUP.
Okay, we got that motion same second.
Thank you. Sorry to keep
Any opposed to that? So we're good on both? All right. 4B.
Item 4B, receive a report, hold a discussion, conduct a public hearing, and make a recommendation on a request for approval of a conditional use permit for the use of auto sales used for property located at 131 East Sears Street, case number 2022-138CUP. This is an aerial view of the subject property. As you can see, there's already a pretty large building on that property. And it is split zoned between commercial and light industrial. However, it's adjacent to both of those zoning districts, predominantly the light industrial zoning district. The applicant is requesting a CUP for auto sales used. This is kind of a a site plan of the interior of the building as well as a survey of the building. They will be housing vehicles to repair and then to later sell. That includes cars as well as motorcycles. For that reason, because of the auto sales and the split zoning, a CUP was warranted. And so I, as a staff member and other staff, we don't have a whole lot of recommendations other than that we do recommend that the commission consider adding a condition prohibiting outside storage. And all sales and repair according to the applicant and the landlord will take place inside. Staff recommends approval of the request and I am present for any questions that you may have and so is the applicant.
What is what is the protocol for any oil and
Sure. So it does say on the site plan that they are going to house oil and other flammable materials inside. The fire marshal has taken a look at this and he he's okay with the location of where this is going to be stored. But it's going to be stored, it's kind of hard to see from this site plan, but it's going to be stored towards the back of the property, what looks like off of East Morton Street.
Do you happen to know what the previous use of that building was?
The only use that I'm aware of was it was the Coors building. I don't know what it was prior to this specific use. I don't, I'm not familiar with who has occupied that building since then.
Is that they're going to have to start all over as far as converting it?
I don't, I I can't speak to that. Maybe the applicant
Yeah, it's okay, but as far as the use, it's quite different.
Yeah, correct. That's that's where the CUP comes into play. Thank you.
Okay, is the applicant here this morning?
Yes, sir.
If you would state your name and address for us for the record, if you'd like to come forward. John, you're going to, you're going to speak on his behalf this morning?
Are you speaking or not?
Well, which one's going to speak? You going to speak, John?
All right.
You go ahead and we'll let John go.
My name is James Alverson and I'm looking at, I'm actually running this place. Address would be 131 East Sears. And essentially what we're doing is we're going to be buying and selling vehicles and motorcycles, repairing them. We're not doing paint there, but we're going to be doing the repairs and then reselling them mostly online. So but we will be doing repairs there. So and we're just trying to help the community out because we're trying to sell inexpensive vehicles that are decent, nice vehicles. I've got four of them sold already, four cars and three bikes sold already, and I don't even have them out. I don't even have them done. So there is a need for it. We definitely need need help. So we're probably not going to be that big. I mean, we are, we are looking maybe down the road a year or two, we may have six or eight people working for us. Right now, there's only going to be about two, two to three. So, you know, as the demand grows, we'll grow. So anything else y'all need from me?
Well, so you're not going to store any of the vehicles outside or display
That is cor-
Outside, correct?
If we display a vehicle outside, it will be out front and the vehicle will be put up at night. We will not be displaying anything outside at night because I don't want to, I don't want to take the chance of something being broke into or stolen, you know, as well as anybody else. We don't have a lot of room up front, so there may be two or three sitting up front. It's not, it's not like we're putting 20 vehicles sitting out front, you know? Yes, ma'am.
And the repairs that we done there, only on those cars and bikes that you intend to turn or would be another option?
There will be another option, yes, ma'am. And and that's one of the reasons we're doing this is because I don't know if y'all have ever dealt with Mercedes or BMWs or something like that. It costs $400 to have an oil change. Or for a motorcycle, you take your Harley up to the Harley house, it's $400 to have an oil change. We can do it for $250 and use better oil. And tires, I went and said I had a set of tires put on my bike. $1,100 for a set of two tires put on my bike. That is ridiculous. I paid, I bought those same tires for 250 bucks. Exact same ones. So I've got $500 in it. I can mount them and balance them myself. So we're just out here trying to help people. We're, I'm not out here to make a killing because I've been around for, we've been in business as Alverson Refrigeration for the last 50 years as of January 1st in Dennison. So, you know, we're not, we're not trying to rip people off like a lot of these people are. If I can make a decent amount of money and sell a good product, then that's what it's all about. Because in the end, it's word of mouth.
I was going to say exactly the same thing, reputation.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. And that's, you know, that's what we're trying to do. And I'm still going to do the refrigeration. And I'm also doing this. I'm going to do, I'm also a glutton for punishment, as you said. So, but my son is also helping me. My brother-in-law is also a co-owner in this, which both of us are veterans, so it'll be a 100% veteran-owned business. So, you know, we're just trying to help out.
You have questions?
What do you think the percentage will be of your business pertaining to public auto or mechanical repair versus your auto sales?
You know, I really, as far as money-wise percentage?
Just amount of business, yeah.
Amount of business, it's probably going to be pretty close to even because it may be a little bit more on the repairs, actually. Because, you know, we'll have vehicles to sell and that's not a problem. But we're going to repair also. And if you're, if we sell you a vehicle or, you know, like I said, you have a problem with it, bring it back to us. We'll fix it, you know? And we're trying to get
50/50 auto sales?
I think so. Right now, I think so. I mean, I've got people waiting on us to open just to get their oil changed or get tires on their bike.
And just to clarify, according to the recommended language from staff, there will be no overnight outside parking?
That is correct.
Okay.
100%. And there will be no damaged vehicles sitting outside for more than the time it takes to get them off the trailer and into the shop. So, because we're not, we're not trying to, you know, put a bunch of vehicles out there and make it look like crap. So we want it to look decent too.
I'd like clarification on we're not going to drive by and see old tires stacked up outside the
That is correct.
Parts and stuff that are taken off of a vehicle that haven't been disposed
That is correct.
So we're not going to see that. I know we have a problem with that on Austin Avenue.
No, sir. You're not going to see that at my place.
Okay, so I'll just
I I don't, I don't want that.
For the record, you've made that clear, so
Yes, sir. I I don't want that myself. And, you know, maybe sitting out there for a few minutes to load it on a trailer, but other than that, no.
Yeah, we just, I I just want the clarification that it's not so much the vehicles themselves as it is damaged parts, old tires, stuff that's been taken off of vehicles.
We actually stack them up, all the metals, so that we can recycle them.
Correct.
So, you know
That's all well and good, but
Yes, sir.
We don't want to see
We don't put them outside.
Stacked outside.
That's correct. Yes, sir. We we try to get, you know, like half a pickup bed full, stacked over in a corner, and then we'll take it all at once. That that's all we do. I mean, and and it's like we're changing a fender or a hood or doing just a little bit. It's not like we're cutting a car in half and redoing it.
All right. Any other questions?
This is probably not your concern today, but
Yes, ma'am.
Do you have any plans for cosmetically touching up the building or putting up signage?
Yes, ma'am. I would love to put up several signs on the building. I have got to go down to Hanging T and we're going to draw up my logo and everything so that I can make, have a banner made and have, you know, different, different things made from them so that we can do that. Yes, ma'am. I'm not going to have a hanging sign out, you know, that's, it'll be on the building. So
Make sure you, you with the city, get your sign permit
Yes, sir.
Because there are stipulations as to how much you can put on.
Yes, sir.
Make sure you do that.
Yes, sir.
It's not an historic
Yeah, that's right. Okay. Any other questions? Thank you, sir.
Not a problem. Thank y'all.
John Munson?
I'm John Munson. I live at 1127 West Morton and I represent my brother Felix, who lives in Round Rock, who owns the building. I sold it to him. Couple of things that Drew did not mention, but most of their business is on internet. In other words, they buy off of internet and they sell on internet. And the ladies here have the guidelines in the lease. Basically, that building has been upgraded considerably since it was Coors and then Andrews Distributing had it. And then I brokered it to him, but the lease itself prohibits outside storage. And in fact, we mow the, part of our obligation to the tenant is to keep the grounds mowed. And that includes this site and across the street to the north. If you drove by there, it's well manicured and that's our responsibility and we're very interested in the exterior appearance. So that's about all he didn't say. So
Any questions, Mr. Munson?
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Anyone else here to speak on behalf of this request? Either in favor or in opposition? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and I'll entertain a motion.
I move to recommend approval of additional use permit for auto sales used for the property located at 131 East Sears for the condition with no outside storage. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Here we go. Item 4C.
Item 4C, receive a report, hold a discussion, conduct a public hearing, make a recommendation on a request to rezone Lot 10, block 10 of the Grandview Edition consisting of approximately .14 acres, addressed as 532 West Florence from Neighborhood Services to SF5 Single Family Residential, case number 2022-137Z. This is an aerial view of 532 West Florence Street, just at the corner of Maric and Florence. And this is the zoning aerial. This map does not reflect that the adjacent property to the east, which is addressed as 528 West Florence, was rezoned at the end of 2021 or October of 2021, I'm sorry, to SF5 Single Family. The applicant is currently in the process of constructing a single-family home on this lot and therefore is requesting that the zoning match how the lot is being developed.
The picture, it looks like it's almost done.
This request does conform to the comprehensive plan and this zoning will allow the applicant to move forward with that construction. Staff recommends approval of the request and I'm present for any questions and so is the applicant.
Questions of staff? Is the applicant here? You, are you with him, Johnson, or?
No.
Okay. You want to come here, come forward?
Yes, good morning. I don't have any questions.
Can you give us your name and address for the record, please?
Charles Edwards. My address is 104 Sweet Leaf Drive, Red Oak, Texas.
You're the owner of the property?
Uh huh.
And you're the one building the house?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any questions on our speaker?
Are you living in the home? Are you planning to live in the home?
No, sir. It'll be for sale.
For sale.
This house was permitted?
Yes.
Did we not catch it before?
No, it was, you correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Edwards, but I believe it was permitted at the end of 2021. We caught it when we started doing plan review. And so we are, we're trying to make sure that he doesn't have any issues when he goes to sell the property.
I think what happened is the, as we were doing all of this, the house next door was going through the same thing. And I'm thinking probably whoever approves permits approved ours to move forward because at one point that that was one lot. And when we first brought a construction plan to the table, we wanted to do commercial because it was zone commercial. But because the property was cut in half and cut in half and a residential had already put on the other side, the spacing didn't make sense. So we said, well, we'll do a residential. We turned in the residential application. It was approved. We started constructing. And then through some of the, I guess, what do you call it, inspection process, somebody said, hey, well, this property is is not yet zoned residential. So during our permitting process, it just, I guess, wasn't brought to our attention that it needed to be rezoned since we turned in the permit for residential and it was approved. We started constructing. So I I think it was, again, just because of the property next door was already going through the residential approval process, it it probably got overlooked. I'm not sure, but that's what I'm thinking.
Any questions? Thank you, sir.
Okay.
Anyone else here want to speak on behalf of this request? All right, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to recommend the approval of changing the zoning of subject property for the Neighborhood Services zoning district to the S5, SF5 Single Family Residential zoning district.
Second.
Have a motion of the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Item 4D.
Item 4D, receive a report, hold a discussion, conduct a public hearing, and take action on a replat of Lot 13R, block 52 of the original town plat of Dennison, Texas, case number 2022-131RP. This is an aerial view of that subject property. I think it's currently addressed as 226 and 224 West Main, or the address could have already been corrected. They are constructing a new building on this location. It's zone Central Area. And in order to mitigate the crossing of lines, the applicant has come forward with a replat. However, this replat, it only has a depth of 120 feet. Our Central Area zoning district requires 125 feet.
I have a big question.
If the applicant was to conform to our zoning district, they would encroach either on Main Street or in the alley by five feet or half of each. I've done a little bit of research and all of Main Street is platted at 120 feet in depth. I also don't know when Central Area, when this lot size requirement or lot depth requirement was created. The last two years or that I've seen Uh, the last two years or that I've seen where we have done any kind of amendment to the central area zoning district was in twenty twenty-one for mobile food vendors and then, um, two thousand and eleven for, uh, the residential prohibited on the first floor. So I, I, I don't know why the requirement for a hundred and twenty-five feet was, um, was written. But staff is recommending, uh, approval of the replat as it's presented. Um, and staff is going to work on bringing forward that amendment to that, uh, development standard, um, before the commission, hopefully sometime in the next month, and then to council for approval.
Just a quick comment is at one point, I don't know that this would have made a difference, but we thought that two of those zones were redundant. I think if I recall, it was C and CA. Do you remember?
C is commercial. CA is central area, according to our zoning district.
There was something like that where maybe it's not the ones, but anyway, they, they changed it. Uh, I think, I know that there's a number of buildings that are alley to the front, a hundred twenty.
That's, that's correct.
That impacts a number.
Yeah. Uh, if you look, I mean, you can walk down Main Street on either side and you can see that it's a hundred and twenty feet in depth.
There's no wiggle room.
No, no, there's none. So, um, like I said, um, we're recommending approval as the plat, uh, the replat is presented and we will work, um, on bringing that amendment before the commission and to council, hopefully within the next month.
Sounds good.
I'm present for any questions you have. I don't believe the applicant is here. Um, but if you have any questions, please let me know.
Questions, staff?
Already did. I already did. Just the question of, of the zoning before, but.
Well, my question is this. Um, we're gonna move forward with approving the plat, but the plat does not technically, uh, meet the requirements. So is that a legal issue that we may have to deal with?
I would say you can make it contingent upon approval of the amendment, uh, during the next council meeting. We've been given the directive that we need to get this done ASAP because we have other buildings that are going to be, um, coming forward, uh, soon. Um, so that would be my recommendation that the motion approve the replat, uh, contingent upon the approval of the amendment to the lot depth.
Okay.
And just to clarify, you, we're going to try and, um, notice for that amendment so that it will come before the commission, the first meeting in February, which I believe is February fourteenth. And then that would go to council the following, whatever the, uh, pre, uh, following council meeting would be.
Get us in trouble. I don't look good in gray or orange.
Neither do I.
All right. Anyone else here to speak on this request? All right. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
I move to approve the proposed replat.
Contingent?
With the contingency.
With the contingency of the ordinance, is it an ordinance change? From one twenty-five to one twenty feet.
Okay. Have a motion. Is that acceptable, you guys?
I haven't had anything.
All right, cool. I need a second.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item four E.
Item four E, receive a report, hold a discussion, conduct a public hearing and take action on a replat of lot one R, block one of the Pioneer Ridge Phase One Edition, case number twenty twenty-two dash one thirty-six RP. This is for Iron Root Distillery. Uh, this is an aerial view of that subject property. It's right at the corner of Loy Lake and seventy-five. Um, just to the east is Hyde Park Apartments. Um, and to the north is Hux, if you're trying to figure out where this is located. Um, it's currently zoned commercial. And, um, I apologize, I did not put the replat on here, but it does conform to the commercial zoning district. Um, they are working on, um, replating it from two lots to one in order to construct two new buildings. There is a site plan that is a, um, companion item on this agenda and you'll be able to see the, um, whole property at that point. The property is zoned commercial and falls within the highway oriented and corridor district. I'm not sure why it wasn't replatted in the past because I think the current, um, building does cross that lot line, but, um, we're trying to clean that up so they don't have any issues in the future. Staff recommends approval of the replat and I'm present for any questions and so is the applicant.
Any questions of staff?
I did notice, and I mentioned to you, Diane, about the, uh, landscape plan. Is that gonna be approved with this as well?
That'll be approved with the site plan. So, and that will be, uh, another item on this, um, agenda.
At a future date?
No, today.
Oh, today.
It's a companion item on this agenda.
Yeah, just, um, a comment.
Okay.
I noticed, uh, that the Porpoise macrocarpa, the burroks that were placed there, um, I, I fully approve a number of them. It's one of my favorite arbor trees, but they are too close together and for them to have a sustained growth at that location, I think would be really difficult.
Okay. Um, so this case is just for the replat. Um, when we venture into the individual consideration section of this agenda, um, we'll, we'll talk about the site plan and we'll make sure that that's on the record.
Item five A.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay, where was I? Did we close the public hearing?
No, sir.
We did not?
No.
Okay. Anyone here to speak on this? Okay. We're gonna close the public hearing and, uh, we'll entertain a motion for, oh, we've already done it?
No.
No, okay. Uh, four E. Yeah, I need a motion.
I move to approve the proposed replat.
I'll second.
All right. Motion of the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Okay. Moving on to items for individual consideration. Item five A.
Receive a report, hold a discussion and take action on a site plan for Iron Root Distillery located at thirty-one eleven West Loy Lake Road, case number twenty twenty-two dash one thirty-five SP. Um, once again, this is Iron Root. It's zoned commercial and it does fall within the highway overlay, which is why this, uh, site plan is coming before you. The reason why it's on IC is because of the building materials the applicant would like to utilize in the construction of the new, um, the two new buildings. This is the aerial view of the current property. It's kinda hard to see, but on the back portion, um, and correct me if I'm wrong, but it is constructed out of metal and with the brick veneer on the bottom. They also have a metal roof on their original building. This is the site plan with the two, uh, proposed buildings on the north and, uh, east side. Sorry, my clicker. There we go. And this is building A. The applicant would like to construct both building A and B of the same materials that are located on the back of the, uh, main structure. So it's metal siding, metal roof and then, um, brick veneer along the bottom. This is coming before you as an, uh, individual consideration item because of the requirements and the highway overlay. Um, while staff recommends approval of the building materials that are being utilized as they've already been utilized on the property, this, the highway overlay does require a hundred percent masonry products for buildings that are constructed. For that reason, we are asking you to consider, um, the use of these other materials, being the metal siding and the metal roof. They are using these buildings to accommodate, uh, barrels, um, and, uh, dry goods. And I am present for any questions that you may have. I know that was kind of jumbled up, so please let me know if I need to clarify anything. But staff does recommend approval of the site plan as it is, along with the landscaping. And we do approve of, uh, the building materials.
I wanted to comment. Uh, Loy Lake Road is about to undergo, uh, a complete rehab or, uh, total reconstruction of that road through Public Works. And so the landscaping on that side of Loy Lake will be done as part of that project as well. So we didn't require, uh, anything on that side because it'll just be torn up again when Public Works goes back in to put the street and the sidewalks in and then having some type of buffer there as well. So just keep that in mind as well. We don't want to require the applicant to do anything because, um, we don't want their money to go to waste when Public Works comes in to expand that road.
So looking at the, the fencing that they have at this point, is the road construction going to impact the fencing well?
So there is no fencing there at this point in time. Um, it'll, so the road for Public Works, that Loy Lake's going to be a total, it's going to be a new road, right? So they're going to expand it. They'll have to put in sidewalks that are going there. As you know, it'll go under seventy-five.
Will the elevation change?
Not to my knowledge. Nope.
In their replat, they have already dedicated the necessary right of way, um, for that project. And I don't believe that the, like Mary stated, I don't believe that the, um, the project itself is going to hinder upon any of their building materials, so their fencing or anything like that. Um, just in between the road and the, uh, property itself, we, we did not require anything just to make sure that they didn't waste their money, as Mary stated. And Mr. Zapata, you had, uh, a concern about the trees?
Yeah, the burroks, they're traditionally a long-lived, big growth tree. So the spacing, it looked like was about four, the canopies and the, the root structure are way too close to each other for that kind of tree to successfully grow.
Okay.
Just, I, I, I like the number of trees. I don't know if your tree ordinance requires that amount. I'm guessing it does, but, yeah, if you want, uh, successful sustained growth of the, that species of tree, they need to grow apart.
Okay.
I think we're working on revisions to the tree ordinance now. That could be something we take into consideration, spacing at that time and put it into the ordinance.
Yeah, just for this particular species of tree, it, it would, it would have, uh, a difficult growth later in its stage of life. And they're having that with us, so.
Okay.
Thank you for your knowledge on those things.
Just comes in handy in tree gardens, and I guess this.
Okay, um. Which one of you guys wants to speak first? Mr. Vilbeek?
My name is David Vilbeek. I'm a civil engineer on the project. Address is five seventeen West Woodard, right around the corner. As far as the right of way goes, the, uh, right of way is currently dedicated ample so that the fence will be on that right of way line and, uh, the city Public Works has looked at that. We don't need any additional right of way on that line. As far as the trees go, this is a concept, uh, plan for the, uh, landscape required by the application for this and we can move those around however we need to. So, uh, I've got, um, David Baca is here, the architect. If you have any questions on the building facade itself, you do not want me commenting on that, I will assure you. So I haven't, happy to answer any other questions.
You're off the hook, buddy.
Do I?
You're off the hook.
Thank you.
David, would you like to come and?
David Baca, one hundred North Travis, in the city south of Denison. Thought you'd like that.
Thought we revoked your passport.
So I don't have anything further to add, but I'd be happy to answer any questions that you all have on the facades.
So basically, for clarification, the buildings are gonna match the building that's there. So it's gonna.
That is correct.
It's an consistent, uh, series of buildings that were, it's not a hodgepodge. It's gonna all match in the.
That's correct. Yes, sir.
In its original state, yeah. Any other questions, Mr. Baca? Thank you, sir.
Thanks.
I'll give you the opportunity unless you just wanna let them do your, your heavy lifting for you.
I can answer any additional questions. Robert Licorice, uh, fifty-six twenty-one Ridge Pass Lane in McKennie, Texas, actually. So, farther south, I guess.
Getting worse?
Yeah. Um, yeah, uh, uh, I'm the president of Iron Republic Distilling. Uh, we're in the process of obviously expanding operations. So if you guys have any questions regarding any of that or any of the plans on that, I'm more than happy to answer any questions for you.
Just keep up the good work. Congratulations on your success.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
You've been a good neighbor. I think you, uh, you know, you've made Denison famous, you know, so we appreciate you.
Thank you so much, guys. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else here to speak, either for or against? Seeing none, I'm gonna close the public hearing and I will entertain a motion.
I move to approve the site plan as presented.
All right.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thanks, guys. See you later. Item five B, Rick.
Item five B, receive a report, hold a discussion, conduct a public hearing and make a recommendation on a request to rezone approximately one point oh one acres from property or for property located at twenty thirty Texoma Drive from the commercial zoning district to the light industrial zoning district, case number twenty twenty-two dash one one six Z. Um, at our meeting, um, held on December sixth, um, staff asked that the commission consider tabling this zoning request to the meeting held today. The applicant is requesting a rezone for this property from commercial to light industrial. And we ask that you table this item to today so that they could provide us a zoning narrative. They have provided us a project narrative, but they have not, um, provided us the narrative that states why the zoning is appropriate for this area. And we still don't have that narrative. We are asking, um, that you consider giving the applicant just a little bit more time. We have two meetings in February and we're asking that you do table this item, um, to know later than the February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three meeting. Hopefully between now and that meeting, the applicant can provide us their zoning narrative and, um, we can move forward one way or the other with this, um, request.
Okay. Any questions? Since this is a public hearing, is, is the applicant here?
No, sir.
Okay. All right, then I'm gonna close the public hearing. Uh, can we close the public hearing today? Is that, means close? Do we have to close the public hearing in order to table this? Because if we close the public hearing, they won't be able to testify on the case when you come back up, right?
You're just tabling it.
Okay, let's just, okay. So we don't have to close the public hearing?
We, tabling it, uh, allows staff to not have to, um, notice for the items, so.
Okay, so we won't close the public hearing. We would just ask for a motion to table the item to the February twenty-eighth meeting.
So do we want to say by February twenty-eighth? Or on February twenty-eighth?
Uh, no later than February twenty-eighth. At that point in time, you'll have to make a decision whether to deny it and they need to come back through with a new application or.
If they get it done right away, would we consider.
Sure, that we can bring it to the next, sure.
We could do that without changing the motion.
Mm-hmm.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we table this request to know later than the final zoning commission meeting held on February twenty-eighth.
Second.
Have a motion of the second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Okay. Item five C.
Item five C, receive a report, hold a discussion and provide direction on recommended amendments to the city's comprehensive plan. Mr. John Webb, are you going to be the one?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's good to see some turning faces and some, some new members. As you know, we met a little while back to kinda, as a kickoff meeting, we talked about the, the scope of services. I'm gonna touch on kind of the key points that we addressed at our meeting in November, demographics and then really the kind of what I call the meat of today's meeting is really regarding the, the housing, uh, recommendations that Phyllis will be talking to you about. Some key points that we talked about at the November eight. Some key points that we talked about at the November eighth meeting is, we wanted to talk about is the city moving in the right direction. The feedback we received from you is that, you know, the trail system is looking really good, it needs to start getting into some more connectivity. There's good communication between the city and the school district. I believe some mentioned that they served on a committee about the growth that's coming on, felt like that the school district has been engaged.
That is why the city and the school district is communicating.
That's the feedback I got.
I'm sure that's supposed to be Dennison, correct?
Oh, I'm sorry, that's my bad, that is totally my bad. How about that?
What in the world are we even getting about?
Yeah. How about that?
We've really grown.
We talked about the cities be more aggressive in providing affordable housing, and that we need to help create a mix of housing types. We talked about some of the likes and dislikes of the city. We felt like the parks and green spaces is certainly an asset for the city, you completed your master open space and parks and trails plan, which will be a great guide going forward for the next twenty-plus years. As we all know, there's significant infrastructure improvements needed. We are seeing investments by homeowners in our infill districts. However, sometimes that's offset by some of the code enforcement problems in the neighboring areas around these investments. We talked about the major improvements needed along the corridors, the visual improvements, too many used car lots with outdoor storage of cars, metal buildings, additional landscape needed. We talked about, you know, we know Dennison's going to grow, you know, how big is too big? We, I think Commissioner Karam talked about, you know, landing DFW Airport in Love Field, you just see just a sea of rooftops, and hope that we would not emulate that typical growth pattern out of the DFW Airport, where it's just massive amounts of rooftops about, you know, well-planned open space. We understand that the historic, you know, identity of the city is our downtown historic Main Street, and that's always been a positive for the city, and will continue to be a great asset. We believe the next five years are probably the most critical time to plan for the growth. Feedback received, that we hope that the city would have a population that would not require a second high school, that would continue to be a one-high-school city. We understand that the master plan communities are the opportunities, that you can do the density by design, and get a mix of housing types, and get the open space that you're looking for. And we do know that ultimately, that the Preston Harbor area is really going to be an immense opportunity for growth that we'll need to plan for. Looking at the demographics of the city, and this was in your staff reports, I'm not going to dwell on this, but it kind of shows that the city's population has had some boom years and some decline years, depending on how the economy has felt, and how certain major businesses have come into the city and left the city. But as you've seen, since two thousand and ten, there's been continued growth in the city. Between twenty-ten and twenty-twenty, we saw about eighteen hundred new residents, that's a very small of a point eight percent annual growth rate. Working with Betty's office, and understanding how many houses are completed and occupied as of January first of this year, we've added twenty-three hundred and twenty-one new residents in just the last three years, which is a three-point-two percent annual growth rate. With that, given, from what I understand from regional council governments in the state of Texas, with the housing occupancy rate and the amount of people per homes, we're looking at a population now of about twenty-six thousand eight hundred in the city, so significant growth in the last three years. Just kind of the background, there's a lot of growth happening on the I-75 corridor, so in just twenty-twenty-two alone, twenty-two hundred and fifteen new homes were built on the US-75 corridor, and that's just single-family homes, that's not multifamily homes. We're looking at a little over probably six thousand people that moved in on the US-75 corridor north of McKinney just this past year. Looking at some growth projections, I gave two models, we also, I'll be incorporating a third model based upon the land use of the roadway impact fee model. But the line at the bottom, the blue line, is really kind of a moderate growth, but very steady. I feel like, you know, given where we are, that the city will grow, but it looks at more of a steadier growth pattern, going out to twenty-fifty of about a population of about fifty thousand. I looked at a second scenario, where basically after twenty-thirty, given if we have infrastructure availability, depending who our development partners are, that we feel like we really have the opportunity for a significant bump in growth after twenty-thirty, and that would bring us to a population in about thirty years of about sixty-six thousand people in the city, with the majority of that being on the west side of town. The rates, as you start kind of getting towards that higher rate, that population, the rates seem to decline, you know, towards the ending year, so as I got after twenty, twenty-thirty, twenty-forty, twenty-forty-five, the rate of growth starts slowing down. So there's some demographic factors that came out of the census, and now the American Community Survey, and that the population percentage of the city is fairly old, it's a fairly high percentage compared to the state average. Now, the state average is a little off, because we've had such an influx of in-migration. The state of Texas is the fourth youngest state in the United States, so when you compare us to the nation, we're not that far off, but compared to the state of Texas, we do have a fairly high percentage of residents over sixty-five. That second bullet point really caught my attention, is that twenty percent of all Dennison residents, not just those sixty-five and older, put in the form that they have some type of a physical disability. This could range from just a very minor disability to, you know, almost no mobility, or being totally immobile, so it's a wide range, with the fact that twenty percent declared that they have some degree of physical disability, I think was very interesting. State average is twelve percent. And approximately twenty-nine hundred persons indicated that they have some degree of independent living, and I think that will kind of fall in line with Phyllis, we'll talk to you about the housing. The state average is five-point-two percent. Looking ahead, as the chart showed earlier, the city's going to grow. As I've been told for many, many years, it's all about the job market. Yes, we will have financial impacts, as we're going through now. Just heard earlier that we feel like the interest rates, you know, may start coming down in the spring. You know, a lot of our growth, of course, will be depend upon the availability of the city utilities, whether or not, number one, they can make a financial decision to extend the utilities to serve the new development, and number two, can the city actually accommodate that growth? Is our infrastructure, our utility infrastructure available to handle the growth on that? But we do know the residents will be younger, they'll be highly educated, they will possess, you know, a higher income, and their spending will be different than what's in the city today. But we do know that more persons will equate to more calls for service, and more demand on new infrastructure, as well as our existing infrastructure.
John, do you think that this growth is going to put us in a position where mixed-use developments are going to be more common, and we'll see more of those developed along corridor seventy-five?
I think as you see the developers that have, you know, done those type of projects, you know, they're now doing them in Anna and Melissa. I think it's just a matter of time that they're going to want to do that, because they want to be able to provide a variety of housing types. There are certain developers, certain major, what I call volume builders, that, you know, their bread and butter is that three- and four-bedroom home, two, three-car garage, and that's what they do. There's other developers understand that they really need to provide that mixed product within a planned unit development, and I think that you'll start seeing that easily within the next five to ten years.
You bring up another point that has been, you know, as we see this growth, and we start to see the volume builders move this way, what steps can we take as a city to preserve the standards, and the design standards especially, to where we don't wind up with developments, you know, hundreds of houses that all look alike, and within a period of twenty years, they're not so desirable anymore?
Yeah, that's a great question. The city I worked for wanted to not be that stepping stone city. When I lived in Carrollton, it was just kind of known that, you know, after so many years in Carrollton, you moved on to Plano, and then from Plano, you went to Frisco. Frisco really strived to create neighborhoods that people wanted to stay in and live in and age in place. We had some very successful neighborhoods, where we were able to put a mix of housing types in, where, and there's a picture that'll be in Phyllis's presentation, that says, "I love my neighborhood," and that's what you want to do, is create the type of amenities where you don't want to move. You may want to move within the neighborhood, but you don't want to move out. So I think that's what Phyllis is going to set that tone today, and then I think after that, we will then, when the comp plan is adopted, and we have some of those high-level objectives, I think we need to work with Mary and the staff about, there probably are going to be some design standards, some which I call subdivision design standards, that we need to look at, as far as creating what I call usable open space, you know, really, you know, what I call valuable amenities, so you just don't get just a sea of housing. And again, I tell people, you have the, it's in your hands. I mean, it'll be very doubtful that anybody will be able to come to the city and utilize existing zoning to bring the product they want to do, you know, you did the planned development district, what's the name of the large PD on north of seventy-five that was started when I was here, and then y'all revised it?
Hills of Texoma?
Yeah, so that's a good example, you know, you'll get, you know, you'll get projects like that, that we can learn from, and maybe can do even better next time, so you will have the tools. So I think after we come back from the comp plan process, we need to probably come back and talk about what are the true design standards that go into the zoning ordinance and the subdivision ordinance.
I've got a related question in that same direction with the added development. You know, the way Waterloo developed, the lake was there first, and the development came around it, making it accessible to everybody in the town, as well as the other amenities that have been added since. My concern is that with those mixed-use developments, that those may be accessible just for the people that live in that one little bubble of houses. I'd hope that as our growth continues, that we can't create another Waterloo, but it is such a gem, and it's so valuable to our community. I would hope that we would find some way to, and I don't know where it is or what it is, it's just a concept, that we have some other areas that are, that have that, that have the accessibility, the, we have very close to that with THF Park, but it doesn't have the water feature. So that water feature is something really special. I don't, when I see these mega things that have four-hundred-and-fifty houses in them, and they have a water feature, I hope that's not the only way we can get that, that something special like that. So like I said, I don't know what it looks like, I know that there's hospitals that have grounds around them that are wonderful. So trying to foresee in the future, it's hard to imagine, but I just hope that we keep it in our vision to retain that acreage of use in parks to population.
So like, so you've got a great master plan going forward, I think what you'll need to be looking at is, and Phyllis is very experienced with this too, when you work with the developers, there's going to be some areas that are probably private and HOA maintain, but you also need to have public access, trail system that they would build, and maybe there's agreement on maintenance, that they would be able to maintain it, but it's all about, you know, connectivity. So you'll work with them, a lot of them will put, now, a lot of times, these water features are just their detention ponds, that they had to put a, you know, circulation fountain in, it does, it really has no public benefit. So that's what you talked to them, it's like, well, you know, can we work with, get a trail around this water feature, you know, can that, you know, help satisfy, you know, what we need from a parks aspect? But there'll always be a balance between what you want this, because it'd be difficult for the city to, you know, try to maintain every bit of new green space, so there'll be a balance between what the developer and the HOA would maintain versus what's accessible to the city. I'm working on a project now, where we're doing two mixed-use developments, commercial, four-hundred units of apartments, hotel, and four restaurants, and I got the two developers to work together to put in, they're going to build the trails and maintain it, but they're open to all the residents from the neighborhood, so the residents can hike and bike or walk from their neighborhood through a trail system in a creek corridor, you know, to the restaurants. The residents from the multifamily can, you know, hike and bike up, you know, up to the restaurants and the shopping, and developers were happy to do that.
I think you have to be careful, though, because from my experiences, you can get one of these, you know, planned neighborhoods like that, that they isolate themselves from the remainder of the city, and so the amenities for the neighborhood itself are nice, but they're the only ones who get to enjoy it. I noticed in the notes that were presented, that y'all wrote up, that we have one of the lower median incomes in the region, and so do you think that, and I think partially, do you think that's correlated to the amount of elderly people in our city?
Yes.
And so then, the business model, the market for that, is going to be less than what we'd find in a more affluent area. The product that is coming to us to be built, I mean, just frankly, I guess our median resident, income residents aren't going to be able to afford some of the bigger, nicer residential properties that you'll see in some of our more home areas.
I'm not sure about that with the development that's coming in along corridor, the jobs that are coming in, those are going to be younger, more upscale, educated jobs that I think will change the demographic.
Yeah, you think that's going to change that?
Yeah, you've got, you're going to have two things happen, you're going to have this new influx of a younger demographic, you know, with good jobs, you know, of the large job base being built south of us, but you still have an aging community, and, you know, those that are, you know, in their fifties and sixties, you know, if they want to live in Dennison, what are their choices? And I think that's something that Phyllis talked about, you know, there are now just such a wide range of housing options, you know, for the elderly, whether there's, you know, there's now single-family detached homes that are for rent, or for ownership as a condo, and then it goes all the way up to, you know, the four-story independent living. So I don't want to steal some of Phyllis's thunder, but, you know, I think we need to actively recruit some of those developers to look at Dennison. There is one group that has done some projects in the Metroplex that creates just what I call just a neighborhood community, fifty-five and older, but they're detached homes, very small yard, but it's a condo regime where you don't have to maintain anything, they take care of everything for you.
We've actually approved a couple of those projects for Dennison, but they've never, they've never been built.
So, again, I think we have parallel items going on, we're going to have to start looking for the housing, for the influx for those with new jobs, and we've got to look at the housing, and again, I'm getting into Phyllis's home territory here, for those who want to age in place in the city.
Yeah, no, I think just back to my original comment, I just think we have to be careful about isolating the city, so that if we want to maintain the community feel that has been prevalent here in this community for so long, we need to still keep it accessible to the community at large.
You need neighborhood connectivity. I would look very carefully on any gated communities for that, where they want to basically become their own fortress, but it's all about connectivity through the trail system, and through the right type of roadway system, that they're connected and not separated.
Any questions? John, do we have an already real time?
Now comes the good stuff.
Good to see you.
Thank you, John.
Phyllis?
Well, good morning, thank you for letting me bring some of our ideas to you today for some updates to the housing policies that are in the comprehensive plan. And the current plan contains a lot of good recommendations, they're just kind of hard to parse through and find, and so what we've tried to do with our recommendations is to organize them and then provide some context and support for the use issues and recommendations that we're going to work through. This is kind of a summary slide of what we're going to talk about today. We've already touched on, the city needs a wide range of housing types and price points. Preserving and supporting existing neighborhoods is kind of the parallel effort to this, all the new housing that will be developed. Infill housing strategies are still needed, because that is a great, great opportunity and continuing opportunity for the city to provide infill housing and to support that. Infrastructure incentives, we've talked a lot about how with the city, we know the city's going to need a lot of infrastructure support for new development, but there's also a need in the existing older neighborhoods for rehabilitation, repair, like Mary was talking about earlier, just complete reconstruction of streets and utility lines, so that's kind of a, goes along with the housing strategies. And then create, we also talked about creating existing, our neighborhoods instead of unconnected subdivisions, and we'll talk a little more about that. And then finally, we want to provide you some guidelines for when you get zoning cases before you, and what should you be asking, what should you be considering for each of these cases? So that's kind of what I'm going to talk about in my presentation. See if I can get this going right. See if I can get this going right. Evidently not. Operator error, I'm sure, here.
It's the right button.
It's the right, okay. Thank you. I think we had a cut and paste error on this slide, but we wanted to, one of our recommendations is to add a subcategory for a rural residential land use category, as, as you know, the future land use map now just shows residential. And, and there's, there's benefit to that because that provides you a lot of flexibility to consider different lot sizes and types of housing, but, and certainly the city should always strive for any new development to be completely served with water and sewer. But there are going to be some areas out there where it's, it's not possible for sanitary sewer to be provided. And those are areas where it, it's okay to consider larger lot sizes in a more rural landscape and, and type of development. So we're recommending we kind of categorize the residential and kind of do a subcategory that will help you with some of those decisions when you get requests for areas that don't have sanitary sewer service. What we've tried to do is recommend strategies that are focused on a wide, wide range of age, income, renter, owner, and other socioeconomic factors related to housing. And the city should be supporting new housing of all types, single-family apartments, townhouses, patio homes, at a variety of price points. But the parallel effort is preservation and enhancement of existing neighborhoods and for housing options. And, you know, the city is starting to develop programs to help existing neighborhoods, but I know Robert Lay is here, and I know he can tell you from his experience with the existing repair program, that a lot of homeowners in the city, they lack just the, any additional resources for basic repairs. You know, we're talking about a new roof, replacing the clay pipe sewer line, they just, they don't have the money. So it, it's going to require a lot of resources that the city doesn't have at this point to do a comprehensive repair program for seniors and low-income households and others that need that type of, of assistance. So we're recommending that the city look at additional funding sources, grant programs, foundations that might provide some additional resources for repair programs, but also to partner with local nonprofits and volunteer groups for smaller repair and replacement jobs. And I know there's some cities where there are volunteer groups that they can call on that will go out and change light bulbs for people, or change the air conditioner filter, and just some of these things that people may have difficulty doing, but they don't require a full-blown effort from the city, so that there's some partnerships there, I think, that can be considered with volunteers to cover some of those things. Another area that we think is important for the city to preserve and enhance existing neighborhoods is to repair and replace and upgrade infrastructure. And there's a lot of infrastructure in the city that needs, is at the point where it needs to be replaced. And the city's investment in that can also signal to private investors that the city's committed to these neighborhoods, that it, it's okay to come in and spend your money in these neighborhoods if you're building new housing or, or new commercial. So we think that that should be a parallel effort with the private sector to look at infrastructure, because that is something the city can contribute. It's important to look at sidewalks, and we heard this from you, and we've heard it in other meetings, that, you know, the city has sidewalks a lot in the older parts of the neighborhoods, as you get into some of the newer ones, they're not there. So, you know, there is an opportunity to require sidewalks for all new development, to, to go in and start building sidewalks in areas that don't have them, but also to focus on how we get kids safely to school if they're walking to their neighborhood elementary school. And there are programs out there for safe walks to school that really focus on that. So that, that should be an emphasis of the new plan. John talked about improving neighborhood pride, and we know a lot of the older neighborhoods don't have mandatory homeowner associations. I think there's an opportunity for the city to go in and help generate some of that neighborhood feeling, create some voluntary neighborhood associations. The slide references several programs that the city of Plano has for existing neighborhoods. They hold block parties, neighborhood cleanup days, they will go in and, and do intensive six-month efforts in a, in a certain neighborhood where they bring in police and fire and code enforcement, animal control, and just go through kind of an education program, because people, a lot of people don't know how to ask for help. They don't know who, who to call, what programs are out there that would assist their neighborhoods. So there's some things like that that we think the city can, can start to, to do. Now, these come with, you know, you, you need people to do it, you need resources, but I think there's some opportunities there for the city to, to improve its, and enhance its neighborhood outreach efforts. Infill housing is going to continue to be a large part of the provision of new homes in the city. You know, despite its flaws, the infill housing program that ended last year, that would be the envy of a lot of cities, because through that program, you've managed to support neighborhoods, repopulate them, provide new housing options, and a, and new, additional citizens to help support your commercial uses and, and retail. So, you know, I, I've always saw, and kudos to, to Dennison for thinking ahead with that program.
Can we camp there for just a second?
Sure.
The infill district, which I agree, has made a huge difference in the city over the past, what, how long have we been actively involved, about five years or more now?
More than that.
Yeah. We've pretty much over the past couple of years, the infill has been the target of, of a lot of change, and I think as a result, we've destroyed it at this point. I don't think we have an infill district.
That's correct.
We don't have infill development process anymore. We have, in my opinion, we've eliminated affordable housing from the mix altogether. And what steps do you think we could take, Phyllis, that we can go back and reevaluate our infill district and come up with some measures that's going to help? Because obviously Jonathan's here, Jonathan backing up on this, first infill house that I built, we were under that one hundred and fifteen thousand dollar maximum price we could charge for it. And, you know, now, that same house is what Jonathan, somewhere in the quarter million dollar range at this point in time?
Two twenty, I think it is.
You know, and, and everything, everything we've touched on that thing has just gone, you know, crazy. We have no control, obviously, over lumber, concrete, those kind of, those kind of elements, but, you know, we've, just the cost that, through code changes and things that have been done, what would you say we've added to the cost of a unit just through those kind of things? Through permit fees, code changes and stuff that we've had to make over the past couple of years? How much money do you think we've added to the cost of a?
Thirty thousand dollars.
So it's, it's, you know, a lot of it has been, the market itself has been indicative of it, and the cost of lots have, obviously, is another, but is there a possibility the city could go back in and reevaluate the situation and see what, what we can go back and maybe back off on some of the more expensive requirements that we've imposed, if we, if we choose to, to move forward with the, with the infill district? Because right now, I don't see it, I don't, you know, I don't see it being a, I think if, anything that we do from this point forward right now is going to be investment properties. And we've talked that, about that extensively over the, over the past couple of years too. I don't think that's the direction we want. I think we want to go back to the owner occupy like it was in, in the beginning, when, when we first put the program into place. So, but I think we have to figure out a way to make, make that happen and somehow back off of the costs, somehow, I don't know how we do it, but if there's any way to do it, to create it where it's a little bit more affordable for people, especially with interest rates being where they are now.
Well, I, I, the issue of investors coming in and buying houses is, is pretty much nationwide. I think it, it's pretty astounding if you look at the percentage of homes that are, are bought or built by investors in the DFW re- region.
Seven out of ten houses are owned and bought by investors.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, I understand that, but it's the way it is. So, so I guess, I, I first was aware of programs when Mayor Brady first made the list of the two hundred houses, well, he didn't make the list, but, but a little bit of help. There were two hundred houses at that time that needed to be either demolished or fixed up, and that was when we started going through that tedious process and how, well, how long ago was he mayor? So, so that's how long we've been working on it, and, and that's, and I hate to see it go from a, a place where somebody can live their dream by building their house or having somebody else build it and have it be affordable for them to live in. And we, we still have the Habitat for Humanity, which, but, you know, they, how many houses do they build in a year? It's, and I don't know, they're, I imagine they're more cost productive from all of the different groups that come together to help build those houses, and we can't expect that, but there's got to be some middle ground in between those things, and maybe it's, maybe it's working with a group like Habitat. And, and I, I don't know what it looks like, but I think we need to look into the future and so that, so individuals that want to have a house can afford to have a house is bottom line. I think we want to have that kind of community where we can still do that and not have it, I don't know how you keep, I mean, you want the positive part of people investing in Dennison, that's the positive part, but how do you control it?
Well, you're right, you know, and one of our recommendations is to partner with groups like Habitat, but their production numbers are pretty low every year because of their model, volunteer model, and, and, but they do focus on homeownership. So I certainly wouldn't discount them as part of, of the mix of, of options there for, for the city to consider. You know, another recommendation is infrastructure, and I know with the, there are not a lot of vacant lots now left in the central part of the city that have infrastructure, but you have a lot of properties where the streets are planted, lots are planted, but there are no, there are no streets, there are no utilities. And so those are areas potentially that could be opened up for new housing with the city's assistance in, in providing infrastructure. Fee waivers is another thing to consider, you know, that, that might come into, through the mix for infill and affordable housing projects. But, you know, you, you want to kind of look at where, where are the available opportunities for additional infill? You know, what's the city's capacity to provide infrastructure in those areas? You know, and, because I think that's a, probably the best opportunity at this point, or tho- those areas to expand into. You want to make sure they have amenities, those areas, because are they close to schools and parks and, you know, the things that people would want to, you know, to be close to if they're going to buy a house? So I, I, there's some things I think we can look at to refocus the infill housing program and, and look at different incentives. I think if you are providing incentives, the flip side of that is better design standards, you know, that, that builders would agree to, that would come along with getting the streets and sidewalks and utilities extended and, and that type of thing. So there's, there's trade-offs there. It, it's, I don't know that there's a perfect model out there to consider, but certainly there's some things that I think would, would help to continue that success of the infill program.
What about our encouraging low-income housing tax credit projects? Do we, should we, are we?
You know, that is a, something that we're recommending that the city do, because that is a good way to get housing for those lower-income groups. And, and, you know, it, it's not a program, it, it's very distinct from Section Eight and, you know, some of the other HUD programs. It certainly is a great way to get senior housing through the tax credit program. And, you know, you'll, you'll see a lot of senior housing projects in, you know, Plano, Richardson, Garland, that area, that are funded through those, the tax credit program. And they are competitive, and the codes now, state legislature now requires that cities provide some, you know, indication of support for the projects. So that's a key component in the scoring of, of those projects when they go before the state to, to get funding. So, you know, there, there's some things there that the city can develop, when is it appropriate to support a, a tax credit project and when is it not? And there's certainly some examples from other cities out there to consider. But definitely that should be one of the things that the city looks to and encourages to provide that housing at, at that price point.
It's hard for, we've had those discussions with some of the developers with bigger developments, and it has to be of a certain size and cost for them to even take advantage or consider it, right? So it's that soft education piece that we have to be providing to get them on board with something like that, so that they understand. We had someone last week that, we talked about it, they weren't familiar necessarily with it. So then it's getting, they have to go through the legal process as well and have their staff and the financial piece work for them. So I don't think it's out of the question, it's just making sure that they understand the benefit to everybody involved.
I think what you'll find too is there are developers that this is what they do. They do tax credit projects, and because it is a pretty complex regulatory system and, and, you know, tax system and assessments and all of that, so they really focus and are experienced in that. And I, I think there's opportunity to attract, for Dennison to attract the attention of those developers, you know, with the additional growth that's going to be occurring.
So Phyllis, the, just, I know you're in the industry, and I've been out for quite a bit of time, so in a, like an SF five zone, what type of, what would be the cost for a home in that type of SF five zoning?
Yeah, Charlie's probably going to know that better than I do, as for this market, yeah.
Considering you're probably going to spend more twenty-five, thirty-five for a lot, is that about right?
Yeah, that's pretty close. You might pick up, you know, you might pick up a few properties a little less, but you're going to have to demo a property and that kind of thing, so average it all out, but, I mean, we were setting at, it's changed a little bit, Jonathan, you can jump in here if you need to. We were setting at about two hundred dollars a foot on a sales price. Now that's changed, and then I heard this this past week that.
So that's a five thousand square foot?
Lot.
Or a lot?
Minimum five thousand foot lot, yeah. So it's about a, those houses are twelve to fifteen hundred foot, in that range. I just heard that, that there are a couple of builders who have product on the ground, they've lowered the price to, one of them was at one eighty-five a foot, the other one was one eighty-seven a foot, and they've come down, they were over two hundred when they started.
So for a twelve hundred square foot new build house on a five thousand square foot lot, you're looking at, what would be the low end cost for a brand new property for a homeowner?
Right at two hundred, I would say.
Two hundred thousand. Would you?
There are more, now, there's still some that are being built without garages because we've got our permits in over a year ago.
Right.
And those are hitting the market still at even the two twenty, our smallest one's selling at two twenty, but if we did have, if they had a garage apartment, they would be higher.
So at our median income of, what was it, thirty-eight thousand approximately, according to your report here, is that an affordable, is that someone who could afford that house?
No.
So the median income level of our population can't afford the lowest end new build in our city?
That's the problem.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Yeah. Mr. Aaron Hart, how would you respond to that concern?
A lot of it's a nationwide problem.
Exactly.
One the city can't address. You know, with interest rates where they are now in their flux, the investors are stalking to buy real estate because they're growing. So, that prices, of course, are driven up quite a bit by that. So, if you were to buy that two hundred fifty thousand dollar house at a seven percent mortgage, you would be paying more per month than you could rent that house for. And you're not paying maintenance, taxes, insurance, or any equity on the house. So, it's easier for most people just to rent right now. I think a lot of that's going to have to do with just the, the state of the nation. But to, you know, if you don't have those garage requirements and things like that, can bring down that price some, but again, the ratio will probably stay the same. You know, we prefer to sell to homeowners, but it's, it's, they're not always can still afford it even at the, the cheapest range. So, you'd have to go to.
So, is the profit margin for building a home similar just to like a regular retail? Like, your profit margin as a builder for a two hundred thousand square foot home? Do you want it to be about twenty percent of the property value? Is that what it is?
Yeah, yeah, so twenty percent or less is what, what a lot of times. But here recently, when I'm higher, so the profit stayed because of market demand. So, even if you, the city did a lot of things, if the houses were selling that high, they would just sell that high. You know, but now it's probably back to the, closer to the twenty percent.
That means to be your profit margin to be successful, I guess, in your business. I was only asking just considering some incentives to bring down a property cost to a builder, I guess, so that he still could maintain the property margin, but lower the cost for an entry-level buyer.
So, I don't think that is something that we're, we're going to be able to correct, right? That's not, that's out of our control at the moment.
Right.
Uh, especially with the comp plan, right? We don't have like a Department of Housing or a Director of Housing or something like that that could create, um, down payment assistance programs or credit repair programs to help those people get to the position where they can afford to buy something, right? There's a number of factors, not just the cost of material and whatever the market's dictating. So, I think, I don't know if we're at the point of, of the city.
Right.
To have, we don't have the resources right now to, to correct or to, um.
Well, and the only reason I mention is I'm reading these recommendations.
Right.
And I'm just trying to visualize in my head, are they attainable?
They are.
Or have?
The things that Phyllis and John have been working on are certainly attainable. It's not going to be overnight, that's for sure, right? Um, but we have to get creative and we have to have the backing of all of you and City Council so that staff has the ability to put some of those things in place and to be creative um, with what, what, what we're able to do. So, when these recommendations come forward, that's really what we're looking for is saying, these are the things we think could work, um, help us get to that point so that we can make them happen.
No, I, I mean, I, I read these recommendations and I, I agree with some of them. I was actually in the city of Plano, I worked for the city of Plano, starting those voluntary neighborhood associations there um, and worked in other cities where we, in neighborhood services where we started programs to, you know, either incentivize or encourage residents to, to get together to maintain their sense of communities in their neighborhoods. And it, it is a difficult thing. And as I read these and considering where we are as a city, I'm just trying to visualize how we, we get that to come together, so.
I think that's on us and our leadership to get creative with our budgeting and see where we need to make those financial investments to bring staff to develop that capacity as well as other incentives. So, trust me, we're on it. And we have conversations all the time about it internally of how to make it happen. It's just, I can understand it's frustrating when you don't see things happen quickly, right? You see the need and you.
I've been in city government all my life, I know how.
So, you know that. It's keeping me up at night.
Okay, sorry, Phyllis.
No, just a couple more points on infill housing. Uh, paving existing alleys, uh, I think would help incentivize infill housing. And you require them to be rear-entry lots. That way, you, you can really make those usable and get cars off the street, get garages in the back. So, there's a design improvement element to that as well. And then looking at vacant lots, parking lots, buildings on the side streets of downtown, those are housing opportunities. And the more units that you can put within walking distance of downtowns helps to boost the businesses and the restaurants and provides customer base. And, you know, I think people are looking for that lifestyle. So, you're, you're going to see people wanting to live closer to downtown. And, and so certainly, that's an opportunity that, that you have on the ground to look at, uh, housing instead of more commercial space because it frankly is unlikely you'll be able to fill a lot more commercial space because Main Street's so long and has such great buildings and, uh, you know, but, but there's opportunity on the side streets to look at housing for, for, to help support downtown. Another concept that's getting a lot of attention, and we've talked about it before, is kind of the missing middle of housing to provide more affordable housing. This could be garage apartments, which were very prevalent in the past. It could be townhouses, duplexes, smaller lots, single-family, uh, fourplexes, that type of thing that are in primarily single-family neighborhoods. Now, you have to be cautious with this because you, you want to make sure lots are large enough, that there is available parking for these increased densities. But you're not talking about a huge increase in density. But being able to tuck some of these different products in single-family neighborhoods is a way to start providing some affordable housing. You know, this isn't, I'll go to the next slide here. This is not a new concept. Uh, you know, this is, in nineteen sixteen, you could buy a Sears kit house, quadplex. And you'll see this type of development in older neighborhoods and cities. Uh, in M Streets and Lakewood areas in Dallas, North Oak Cliff. If you drive around those neighborhoods, you'll see duplexes tucked in between single-family homes. Uh, you'll see fourplexes, usually not more than four, but certainly, you know, that type of housing can be done. And here's some examples from Dallas that are duplex and triplex that are tucked into single-family neighborhoods. John mentioned earlier these single-family-for-rent, uh, projects. These are a new, I call them an investment vehicle because that's really what they are for, for developers and builders. It's, it's a, a new type of investment for them. There's some benefits to these. You have one property owner that provides all the maintenance and, and the leasing and, you know, the evicting and that type of thing, uh, rather than it being individual landlords. So, there's some benefits, I think, to a city to accommodate these, uh, single-family-for-rent developments. But you also need to look at the flip side of that and make sure that where you do allow them, it's appropriate. And you have some strong deed restrictions in place and that, um, you know, twenty years from now, people don't start trying to sell off individual and create replanted individual lots. And you lose that cohesion and the benefit of having a single property owner to man, own and manage that type of development. Cities are paying a lot of attention to this type of development. It's coming. I, I know when I was working up here last year, we had a property that was being considered by one of the major home builders for this type of development. So, uh, it, it's certainly nothing to prohibit. It, it can be a part of your housing options, but you want to make sure you have the right controls in place. There are also federal, state housing programs for affordable housing. Uh, these are grant funding through a CDBG, the Home Program, tax credit programs, and then the partnerships with nonprofit builders. The flip side of the federal grant programs is that there's an administrative requirement and so you have to have people and resources to administer these grants. And that comes out of the grant and sometimes that doesn't leave you with a lot to actually devote to, uh, you know, the programs and, and the things that you're trying to do. So, certainly there's an opportunity for the city there, but that needs to be also assessed in terms of what's it gonna take to administer these, these programs? And what benefit do we get in, in return and is that, is that balanced? We've talked a lot about senior housing, given Dennison's population. And certainly there's opportunity to assist seniors with home repairs and rehabilitation and, and to kind of target some of your funds to that population, to try to keep them in, in their homes. But also to encourage and recruit a range of senior housing options. And this is fully independent living to, uh, long-term care. A, a lot of, uh, cities now see single-family homes that are, are used to, uh, house four, six, eight seniors. Uh, this is kind of one of those middle options for someone to not go to a more institutionalized a type of senior housing or care facility. So, you know, those are in your city. Uh, you know, you, you may not always know where they are and, and that's, that's the point, that they fit into neighborhoods. But, so there are a wide range of things here, I think, for the city to consider to add to the senior housing options. Most people are gonna want to age in place. And so, uh, helping them do that is, is also, I think, a good way to, to help manage that, that situation. Let me move now to undeveloped properties. And, you know, you have a unique opportunity here with so much of the city undeveloped to start looking at subdivisions more as neighborhoods and not discrete individual subdivisions. You want to make sure there's a mix of housing for all stages of life. And this gets back to people being able, aging place, maintain family and social connections. You want to make sure if you've got a two hundred acre subdivision, that maybe it's not all SF five lots, uh, that there are also, uh, an area for duplexes, patio homes, townhouses. Uh, you know, primarily going, th- these properties are primarily going to develop with traditional single-family. But there's an opportunity to kind of mix it up and the city should encourage that as you work with these developers.
I've got a question for that area. I think that's one of the, you mentioned with the school-age kids and the connectivity that's necessary with the sidewalks and kids being able to walk to school if they're close. I think in the senior development, we need to think about the connectivity and keep that. I don't know if you have it on the next slide. I, you seem to anticipate things I've already said, so, um, but that, I think the, the bike lanes, we haven't mentioned today at all. And I think that's something that we need to keep in mind because they don't, they don't have contractors for bikes coming and talking their, their part, their point of view. So, I think that's a voice that I'm saying for them, that they, we need to keep that in people's minds. There was a, a dream of connecting Main Street with our different parks and the Katy Trail. And that's, uh, as we move forward and create these other neighborhoods, there are people like Dr. Duke who rides his bike all the way to the hospital on a daily basis. And I can see with more we're trying to get into neighborhood, community activities and getting outside more, the, the bicycles are an important part of that. So, uh, we just need to not lose sight of it. I think this is a perfect place to insert some, some wordage about the connectivity because we older people really need to get out and walk, everybody.
Well, I, I think.
I don't care about, you walk the foot down way from Main Street, plenty. Not a problem.
Well, you anticipated my next slide.
It happens.
Because, you know, linking neighborhoods with trails and streets is, is key. And, and you really should look at it regardless of the population, whether it's seniors, it's young children, uh, it's, it's people that ride their bike to work. Everyone needs those opportunities. And it, it shouldn't be that one part of the city has a good trail system and the other part of the city doesn't. So, I think, you know, and I know the city has worked really hard on new parks master plan, trails master plan. And those are the kind of things that, uh, need to be taken into consideration when developers come to you for these large zoning case, property, or these properties in, in big zoning cases. And how well does that match up with the parks, uh, plan? And do we need to accommodate trails? So, you know, all those questions come into play when the, the city staff reviews and makes recommendations, uh, you know, to, to the city. John also mentioned schools. Uh, and I know that, uh, there's a lot of, of effort right now between the city and the school district to start looking ahead and planning for growth and, and making sure. Uh, I know Mary's making sure they know about new development that's coming in so they can add that to their projections. So, that really is, is key in an effort that needs to continue so that they get school sites that they need. Uh, the city can, uh, accommodate park sites sometimes along with the schools, trails, sidewalks, everything that's there to support, uh, you know, your public school system. You know, when, when, as you see new developments come in, you're gonna have a park plan. And you want to make sure that developers are working with the city to acquire that public parkland uh, that, so that every neighborhood, regardless of its lot size, its type of development, has access to a public park. Now, you're going to find developers that want to do the private, uh, open space. Uh, and that can be used to support your public parks. But the city's focus really should be making sure that park system is built out and, and that it's comprehensive, connected, and those are the things you're, you're in control of. Now, not to say that home builders and, and developers can't supplement that with private open space. Uh, and yeah, that's probably going to be limited to, uh, you know, residents in that area, especially the amenity centers that you'll see, the developers, the pool, the clubhouse, that type of thing. But certainly, the city has an obligation to make sure there's public park space for everyone as well in these neighborhoods. One of the things we wanted to finish the housing section with is some recommendations and guidelines to assist you and the city council in making, uh, decisions on zoning cases. Uh, we've, we've, we've seen PD zoning, planned development zoning, being used more and more in the city. So, that certainly is a way to continue to obtain unique and innovative housing that doesn't quite fit into your base zoning districts. The flip side of that is making sure your base zoning districts are up, reviewed and updated periodically uh, so that they are responding to the housing choices and housing options that are desired, uh, by people moving into the city. When you do have, uh, large properties that come in for zoning, uh, you know, you want to locate small, single-family lots, townhouses and duplexes, they should be located throughout the city, not concentrated in just one area. They can act as transition zones between different densities and intensities of development and also integrated into master plan communities. They're also appropriate for smaller infill sites. Uh, the, uh, the Central Ward Block that, uh, developer came in last year to do townhouses on, I think is a good example of where you could fit in a little higher-density product in an infill location. And you may need to require usable open space depending on the density and size of, of some of these developments. Now, the other thing to keep into, keep in mind with that is are there enough units to support private open space? And can an H O A, over time, sustain itself to pay for the mowing and, and irrigation and that type of thing? When you are, have a multifamily, uh, zoning request, you want to strategically locate apartments throughout the city in residential settings. Again, not concentrating them in, in one area. Uh, you'll frequently hear from homeowners, we're getting too many apartments. And I think some of that can be mitigated by not concentrating them in one area, making sure they're located, uh, you know, on the outskirts of neighborhoods, not right in the middle. Uh, you don't want to put them in non-residential industrial areas. And certainly, uh, housing in general is not appropriate in your major corridors that you want to reserve for commercial and economic development purposes. I think that the exception to that is, is as part of a mixed-use development where the use. uses are integrated and that might be appropriate in some of these corridor locations. And then we added a recommendation that there not be more than 450 units in one apartment concentration, you know, unless there's separation by major thoroughfares. And again, these are just to give you all some guidelines and things to fall back on when you're making those recommendations and decisions on zoning cases. And I'm going to end with just, we've listed some questions for evaluating residential zoning proposals. Is the infrastructure in place to support the development? If not, who's going to pay for it? And is the proposed change going to enhance the site and be compatible with surrounding areas and neighborhoods? And does the change reflect the vision of the comprehensive plan? Are there negative impacts on adjacent properties? And does it contribute to the city's long-term economic well-being? And what features of the neighborhood are sustainable? You know, are they connected with parks? Are they taking into account drainage, that type of thing, and using some more sustainable, friendly techniques in terms of drainage and infrastructure? So we're hoping this will give you a little more support than the current plan does and some things to think about when you're considering zoning cases. And I've been up here talking for a long time, so I'll stop now and answer any questions that y'all have.
I think I already did.
Yeah.
Okay.
We appreciate your work. Thank you. It's great guys.
Thank you, Phyllis.
I'm going to turn it over to, back to John to kind of wrap up here.
Appreciate the questions and the feedback. I think we all took some good notes that we want to go forward. So you've had a chance to kind of digest, I know we threw a lot of information at you. If you would please, over the next couple of weeks, think about it and email Mary or Diane with any things that you think we missed or like, oh, I wish I would have asked this question, I've had some time to kind of digest that so we can have a productive meeting. We want to have a joint work session with the city council. And I don't know, we have a couple of dates that we're looking at that we may try to tie down on that.
Yep. I believe the 13th and the 21st, you should be receiving the email, I don't know if it went out already, from Karen asking what your preference is. And that'll be a joint meeting at 5 o'clock, 6 o'clock?
5:00.
5:00.
And we're talking February, right?
February 13th or 21st. So when you receive that, if you haven't already, just respond back to her so we can get that scheduled and noticed, please.
So earlier we had hoped that maybe we'd then come back and have a formal public hearing with you on the 28th of February. Don't know if we can make that date or not, just depends on what comes out of the joint work session. We may have a lot more homework assignments on that. But after, regardless after the joint work session, we will try to wrap all this up, put a bow on it, and then bring it back to you for a formal recommendation. It would be a public hearing item. And then we'll take it to the next available city council meeting. Again, I don't know if we can make those dates work, but we will work as fast as we can.
Anything else? Does anybody hurt Brad Evans? I'm just hoping he didn't hurt himself after last night, so.
What happened?
Well, he's a big TCU alumni.
Oh, that was not a bad night.
Anyway, okay, seeing no other business before us at this time, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Have a motion from Ms. Karen.
Second.
Second, Mr. Vada. All in favor?
Aye.
We stand adjourned at 11:56 a.m.